I pledge allegiance. I'd like to take the roll call. Christine?
Here.
Tony?
Yes, I'm here.
Art?
Here.
Larry Sloman? I'm told he will not be appearing. Phyllis?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, very good. So Larry's absent. That means tonight I will not have a full board. Ms. Capone will be acting as a full voting member. However, I would point out to all the applicants, because our code requires a majority of the seven-member board for affirmance on any variance. We require at least four affirmative votes to pass a variance. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public is provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the doors of Town Hall, as the town's bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the public. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. In that regard, the first matter for Old Business is Vassar College. I understand that there's a request for an adjournment, so I'd make a motion to adjourn this matter until the December 14th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The next matter under Old Business is Stewart Shops, 2245 South Road. Is there someone from Stewart's that's here?
Yes, hi, Mr. Chairman. This is Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader.
Mr. Glad, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, what can you add to the application?
Sure, so I was just gonna start with a brief procedural update before just going into a quick summary, because I know it's been a little bit of time. So, we were last before the zoning board on August 10th, where this matter was adjourned, pending the planning board's amendment of the action under Seeker. The planning board unanimously amended the negative declaration to account for the newly required minimum lot area variance at its October 15th meeting. And since our last appearance, we have only submitted a short letter on vapor recovery regarding concerns that were raised at the August 10th meeting on benzene. I just want to note that the information in the letter was already included in the gas safety install narrative, which was submitted as Exhibit G to our June 24 submission, and Chad also addressed it at the meeting. But the letter affirms that, in sub and substance, stray vapors are sequestered by the tank delivery trucks on the front end, and then they're sequestered by modern cars on the back end, so there is no in some concern about that. Also, Kenan Bean submitted a letter dated November 9th, which was forwarded to Stewart's this morning, and I just briefly, I also want to just briefly address their letter. Namely, Kenan Bean is mistaken about what the board role is. It's not to uphold the intent of the zoning law that has passed. We're not here to seek an interpretation of the zoning law. We are here to seek an area variance. Therefore, the board's role is to strictly apply the statutory balancing test. And if we, the applicant, meet the statutory balancing test, the board must grant approval. There is no discretion to deny an area variance request once the test is met. And we meet the test. Looking at the big picture balancing test, there is no detriment by granting the variances requested by Stewart's. We've submitted objective, factual, expert evidence conclusively demonstrating that there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. We thoroughly substantiated our entitlement to the variances. First and foremost, we've demonstrated there are no safety concerns associated with Stewart's proposal. As I mentioned, we submitted a safety narrative on the fuel delivery systems, showing there are no safety concerns. This was prepared by Stewart's, who operate over 300 of these locations, and are experts in the field. We also submitted National Fire Protection Association statistics, which is the authoritative source on the subject, that gas stations only account for 0.0009% of fires per year nationwide. And for context, 27% of reported fires come from home environments. And more importantly, the fire department has been commenting on Stewart's application before the planning board every step of the way, and they have not raised any concerns. We also submitted a traffic study, showing there are no traffic impacts. This was prepared by Rich Dandrea, an expert in this field, who is on this call with me this evening to answer any traffic questions. We also submitted a noise memorandum, demonstrating there are no noise impacts. This was also prepared by a sound engineer and other expert in the field. We submitted a photometric lighting plan, showing there are no light impacts beyond the boundaries of the site, which was prepared by an expert in the field, as well as submitted nighttime photos showing how well lit this area is at night, and the really bright street light at the entrance of Oriole Drive, which shows that the project is not aggravating this very bright condition. And I don't want to get caught up too much on intent, and what went into enacting the 500-foot separation law, because frankly, it's irrelevant in the sense that whether it be safety, noise, or light concerns, we have submitted actual proof that there are no impacts in any of these areas. And again, we're not seeking an interpretation, and the board can't refuse to consider a request for a variance because a particular zoning law was passed. The board's sole responsibility in this case, and in every case, regardless of what the law is and why it was passed, is to strictly apply the statutory balancing test, and that's it. Any deviation from the test or the five factors is impermissible. And I just want to make one more quick point before wrapping up. And that, of course, relates to the matter of precedent. I want to be clear, this application is not setting any precedent. Let me say that again. This application is not setting any precedent. And that's because in 2014, this board granted a variance to permit a motor vehicle services facility within 25 feet of a residential boundary line. Here, Stewart's is located 73 feet away. That's more than three times the distance. And what, and that, and it's important to remember, that is from the back corner of the building, not the pumps themselves. And in every relevant respect, Stewart's requested variance is less intrusive than the 2014 variance. And this is because in 2014, the pumps were located 145 feet away from the residential boundary line. Here, the dispensers are located 170 feet away, which is farther. The 2014 property was not separated from the residence by road like Stewart's is. Southgate Drive entirely separates Stewart's from the adjacent residential district. In 2014, the property was adjacent to a residence. They shared a property line, they were neighbors. And I think this fact, and that Stewart's is separated by a road, is of singular importance. Also, Route 9 is significantly busier than Duchess Turnpike. The 2014 variance was off of Duchess Turnpike. Route 9 surpasses Duchess Turnpike's daily trips in three hours. Stewart's application is just a drop in the bucket, looking at the big picture. Also, the Stewart's lot is bigger than the 2014 variance lot, and also Stewart's building is small. So based on this, Stewart's requested variances are clearly less intense, less substantial, and clearly less intrusive on the nearby residential district than the 2014 decision in every relevant way. And the significance of all this, of course, is that the board is bound by this prior decision as a matter of precedent, and there is no valid legal justification which would permit the board to deviate from this precedent. And I know I've said this before, but because you grant our application, that does not mean you have to grant every application in the future. There may be plenty of distinguishing facts which the board could hang its hat on. Here, there just don't have to, or here, there just don't happen to be any. And then just for some quick closing remarks, I don't want the board to lose sight of the context of the variance. What we're talking about here is a commercial property in a commercial zoning district with an existing commercial use fronting on Route 9, which is a major arterial highway. And Stewart's is significantly reducing the scale of existing development on the site, greening it up, and better orienting it relative to the adjacent residential district. And just remember, we don't have to prove a benefit under the statutory balancing test, merely that there is no detriment, which, based on everything I have said this evening and in prior meetings and the close to 100 pages of proof and studies we have submitted as part of our application, there clearly is no detriment. And when you look at the strict application of the balancing test and the five factors, and ignoring all the other irrelevant stuff which is intended to distract the board, Stewart's meets the balancing test, and they are entitled to the relief sought. There is no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Stewart's has no option but to seek the variances, and we have optimized the site relative to the adjacent residential district. There is no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, as evidenced by the NACDEC adopted by the planning board. And even if the board finds one or any of the variances substantial, the courts of the state have been clear time and time again that substantiality alone is not a grounds to deny the variance. And as far as evidence submitted, this board cannot favor unsubstantiated generalized community opposition over the objective, factual, expert evidence Stewart's has submitted as part of its application. So we're happy to take questions. Like I mentioned, our traffic engineer, Rich Dandrea, is on, as well as Chad Fowler from Stewart's. Thank you.
Any questions from the board at this point?
I'd like to hear what our council has to say. If that's a question or just a request.
Art, there's, I actually have nothing to say on this at the point. It is a public hearing, and we will hear from the public on as things go. But the applicant has made their position known, and the public will make their position known, and then it will be up to the board to deliberate.
Lisa, can you refresh my recollection? Did the county have a position on this?
County was local concern.
Thank you. Okay. Tony, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
And Christine?
No questions.
Okay. Who else would like, from the applicant? Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this matter?
Nothing to add from Stewart's.
Mr. Fowler?
Nothing to add.
Oh, very well. All right, then, we'll entertain some comments from the public. I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If your position is similar to someone who's spoken before, you can just indicate that, so we'll get an idea. You don't need to repeat all the, all your positions if they are similar to or identical to someone who's spoken earlier.
So you want to open the public?
Yeah. Is, well, first of all, is there anyone in the, in the room here that wants to speak about this? Yes, you raise your hand up.
Hi, I'm Linda Wright, and I'm...
Ms. Wright, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to support Stewart Shops, the residence in the area that the gas station should be 500 feet.
We're having a very difficult time in the audience hearing. Is it possible to move closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's do that one more time.
Is it on?
Now it is, yes, I apologize for that.
Okay. Hi, I'm Linda Wright, and I'm here to support the residents of the area around Stewart's Shops, the gas station. The gas station, I know there's a town law that it should, no gas station should be built without a 500-feet variance, I mean 500 feet from the resident, and that's for all the safety reasons. I know he, the lawyer, went over it very clearly, but as far as me, I would be afraid of having a gas station next door with all the different safety issues, no smoke, and if it blew up, or if there was a leakage, or you're gonna have lots of traffic, you have the lighting problems, and I think the town law should be stated and kept as 500-feet buffer for the residents. That's all. Thank you.
Anything else from the audience? Oh, okay.
I want to take on the application, but I'd like to give people on Zoom a chance to see if an attorney represent.
Okay. All right, then, we'll, we'll switch to anyone on Zoom who wants to speak, if you want to raise your hand.
All right, I have a couple of hands up. First is identified only as Lucky's iPad.
It's Ed Peters.
Yeah. Please identify yourself, sir.
I'm Ed Peters, I live at 3 Shamrock Circle here in Poughkeepsie, New York.
Mr. Peters, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I had a couple of questions. Stewart's purchased this property knowingly that the zoning ordinance was what it was, correct?
Here, I'm gonna advise everyone that this is an opportunity for you to make comments. It's not a question-and-answer period, but I think it's fair to say that when people buy property, they do an examination to see what the zoning laws are.
Well, my, my point is, they purchased this property, and they made the hardship themselves. If the zoning law was in effect when they purchased it, they knowingly bought it, knowing they would need a variance, because they didn't have the 500-foot setback. This zoning law was put in effect for safety reasons. So, my understanding is, variance should not be granted, knowing that the applicant purchased the property or did something and made the hardship themselves. Just because they want to change it from a deli to a gas station, that's in violation. And it's not fair to the residents. It's gonna devalue their homes, and it's gonna go against what zoning's meant for. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would point out that that is one of the criteria we use to determine whether a variance is granted. Is there someone next?
Next with the hand raised is Doreen Tignanelli.
Hi, this is Doreen.
Hi, Doreen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
So what would you like to say?
Okay, so I'm against the granting of any variances for this project. When you listen to Mr. Glad, there's, there's no safety impacts, no noise impacts, no light impacts, no traffic impacts. I mean, and, and that is just common. I have never, in the almost 20 years that I've been attending different zoning, planning, town board meetings, seems like there's never, these studies never show any impacts. The other thing is that I was at these meetings back in, I believe it was 2012, when the town board discussed this law, and it was also discussed as to whether 500 feet was even enough to protect nearby residents. So, again, I think you need to keep, keep this in, in mind, and the fact that people live in residential neighborhoods, and they expect a certain quality of life, and a commercial property, a budding, a neighborhood like this, should, should at least adhere to the 500 feet. So again, I'm against any granting of variances for this project, and as the previous person pointed out, it appears that Stewart's bought this knowing that there was the 500-foot buffer, so it appears to be self-inflicted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else?
Yeah, next with the hand raised is a person's identified simply as iPhone 323913.
Yes, David Robinson, 12 Gene Drive.
Mr. Robinson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
I'm listening to this lawyer saying, grant him the variance, wouldn't set a presidency on, on that. And then the first thing he went back to is, the variance is granted in 2014. So it's setting a trend here. You gotta stop this guy's, do not give them the variance on this. The community, we live here, we don't want it here. He's talking about traffic expert. Does his traffic expert know more than the people that live here 30, 40, 50 years? I don't think so. So I'm begging the zoning board not to grant variance. They say, don't set a presidency, it does. Once you grant it, everybody gonna want one, and they gonna go back to when you gave Stewart this variance, and they all gonna go back to that. 'Cause he went right back to 2014 variance again. So we gotta stop it right here and now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next with the hand raised is Andrew Bryant.
Hi. My name's Andrew Bryant.
Mr. Bryant, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
I just want to say I've been living in Poughkeepsie my whole life, in that the town has adopted specific standards to control the establishment of gas stations, and that the impact these facilities have on the community. Also, the, the applicant selected this property knowing the restrictions and assumed that they would be able to do whatever they wanted with the property, and that they would get the variances that they requested. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Next is Sayed Shakil. Shakil? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Yeah, this is Sayed Shakil.
Okay.
Hi, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
I urge to vote no on the vacancies and abide by the laws on the book for gas stations. None of you on the ZBA live on, and you, a few, a few hundred feet away, but many of us do. So please think of us. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, next I have Alexa Green with her hand raised.
Hi, yes.
Ms. Green, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
So I also have lived in Poughkeepsie my entire life, so thank you for taking the time to hold this meeting. I just wanted to state that all the variance are mathematically substantial, and will have substantial impacts on our community. We're talking about at least three variances over 50% that result in moving structures closer to the property line and in turn to residence. This application is not similar to other gas stations on undersized lots, as such facilities were constructed, that were constructed before the town adopted this buffer requirement area and the minimum lot area requirement. So I just wanted to bring light to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Someone asked, I believe, a question in the chat. How do you raise your hand in Zoom?
Yes.
Is that Marion?
Yes.
All right, well, there you go, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. I've lived in, I've lived on Southgate Drive more than 40 years.
Ma'am?
Oh, sorry.
If you could just state your name.
Yes, Marion Kozlowski.
Ms. Kozlowski, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say?
I have lived on Southgate Drive for more than 40 years, and I recognize that Mr. Glad and the team from Stewart may have done traffic studies. I don't know if they've observed the flow of traffic at the light on Southgate Drive and Route 9 that tends to get backed up all the way up the road, and the light itself is only 16 seconds long. So when those trucks come in to fuel the tanks, there tends to be a potential problem. There's also a grocery store right next door to a potential Stewart Shop. Is there a reason why we need two convenience stores right next to each other on Southgate Drive? And I also am concerned about the fact that I was here years ago when the cars exploded at what was a Ford dealership, oh, actually, it's still a Ford dealership, but it was a different owner. A whole string of cars exploded because of gas, a gas issue. I don't know if it was the vehicles that got, that caused the explosion or not, but the fact is, the houses rocked a quarter mile away from that explosion. The gasoline issue presents a tremendous problem to the people in this neighborhood. And I do hope that the zoning board, it was only seven years ago that the zoning board passed the ordinance about the 500-foot criteria for the tanks. I don't know why they, at this point, are even entertaining allowing Stewart to put in gas tanks 73 feet away and, and have a variance. I agree with everyone else who's had the comment, why did they buy the property knowing that there was a zoning variance needed to try to even put in the gas pumps so close to residential property? I hope that the board takes all of these concerns under advisement and does not take the vote tonight, but actually gives time and energy to actually address the issues and concerns by the neighborhood.
And the taxpayers.
And the taxpayers. We pay a lot of money in taxes in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have someone who already spoke. I'm gonna skip him for the moment. We'll go to Michael Schwartz.
Hello?
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz?
Hi, my name is Michael Schwartz. My apologies, my camera's being a little funky.
Do you swear or affirm, excuse me, do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say?
So I've been a resident of Poughkeepsie for about 22 years now, and, I mean, I've seen a bunch of gas stations get built left and right, and, you know, it's, I think it's pretty ridiculous that, you know, there's gonna be more variances that allow more Stewart Shops to open up with gas stations. I mean, we, you know, these variances, they're self-created. I don't think there needs to be any more fueling stations. It's having, you know, a very adverse effect on the community, and there's dozens of gas stations, dozens of Stewart Shops, you know, with the filling stations. I just find it ridiculous that, you know, these ordinance, these, I just believe that there needs to be reasonable alternatives that just are more suitable for the area as opposed to, you know, just allowing anybody that comes in to buy a property to change the ordinance. I do want to second what Marion said as well. It's, you know, there, I just don't believe that this is something that's necessary for our community. We've had a bunch of these pop up left and right. I've been to three different town hall meetings, and it's just, I just believe it's ridiculous that we have to continue to advocate for, you know, the common person in the community to just make sure that we don't have another gas station coming up out of nowhere. Just, I believe it's just something that's unnecessary, and, you know, it's just, I believe it's just something that does not need to be done. There's, I believe, I, you know, I've seen a bunch of Stewart's gas stations all throughout, some on Route 9, some in different towns, that, you know, they've been successful without gas stations, without the gas pumps, and in order now, you know, to have this other Stewart's station come in with a fueling station, it's, it's unnecessary. You know, they could make their profits without the fuel, with just through the shops. You know, they have the ice cream, they have the other brands that Stewart's are known for. I believe the pumping stations are just an unnecessary sort of maneuver that they're trying to get to just take advantage of the area.
Anything else?
Not really. I mean, it's just, you know, I'm trying to just pretty much give my point of view. I just don't believe this is something that needs to be done or voted in favor of. It's really about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Greaves.
Okay.
Mr. Greaves, do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Oh, I do.
What would you like to say?
My name is Jim Greaves, I live at 215 over Rock Road. I scribbled some stuff down, so I'd just like to, it's gonna take me a minute to try to decipher what I wrote. So according to Stewart's website, they have 320 stores. Of those 320 stores, more than a quarter of them do not pump gas. There are three local stores, one in Red Hook, Hyde Park, and Opger Falls, that don't dispense petroleum products. Two have been in business for decades, so I would say that they're profitable. The third, in Opger Falls, was denied a variance to dispense fuels based on the substandard lot size. Stewart's has also recently denied a variance in a town of... Stewart's has also recently denied a variance in the town of, um, uh, uh, Fishkill to, to build a, uh, motor vehicle service facility on the Route fifty-two corridor. So it isn't unheard of to deny variances because a project doesn't fit where it's proposed to be built. Um, and then I heard the lawyer at the beginning cite the precedent that this board set in 2015, but I was there for the entire, uh, time for that matter, and, um, there were several other factors that, that weighed in on that decision, none of which applied to this project whatsoever. So, um, I believe that the, uh, that two ten ninety E, the exact language in there says it prohibits a lot within fifteen, within five hundred foot of a residential lot in a residential district to be used for this purpose? So wouldn't that necessarily make it the need for a use variance and not an area variance, since they're gonna use it for a prohibited use? Also, a lot size of two, a lot, a two acre lot size is also necessary, and, uh, the variance for this should be denied. Um, oh, and, and the five hundred foot, they're shredding that by eighty percent. And then the two acre lot size, they want fifty percent relief from that. That's substantial relief, that's just crushing our codes. Those codes are put there to protect us residents that live near your commercial properties. They, the, the, the town board specifically put this in, in two thousand twelve or two thousand and thirteen to stop what Stewart's is trying to have done here. So, um, uh, uh, Stewart's is a large company, and they have deep pockets and lawyers on staff, and they knew the rules before they even came into the town of Poughkeepsie. So this, this hardship, like other people have already said, it's just totally self-inflicted. Um, and based on the public input on this matter, I'd like to ask that the board, take some time and really think about what we had to say here today.
You have a few seconds remaining, sir, if you could just wrap it up.
Before you make a decision. And then I would also, uh, uh, what we really need, what we really need is a moratorium on gas stations based on the zoning codes. Otherwise, the town of Poughkeepsie will soon have
Sir, if you could wrap it up?
Four gas stations per capita than any town in New York State, because there'll be one on every corner if you allow this to continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, lucky too, that's, that was Mr. Peters. I see you have your hand up again, Mr. Peters, did you have something else? You gotta unmute yourself, sir. No, let me try doing it for you, let's see, unmute. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Greaves said quite a few things, I was gonna say, the only thing I'm gonna add is the undue hardship that has to be proven. Stewart's has not shown undue hardship, and I, I may have said this before, but they knowingly bought this knowing they needed variances, and knew that it was against zoning, and they went ahead to do it anyway. So they created this hardship themselves, and that there alone should be grounds to deny this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You can either raise your hand on Zoom, you can use, um, if you're on the phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself.
Linda Mack?
Linda Mack, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Mack, do you swear?
Hold on.
Okay.
Do you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say?
Well, I stand, I live at 206 Over Rocker Road in the town of Poughkeepsie, so I've seen what the zoning board has done before to us. Um, but anyway, so I stand in solidarity with the residents of this project. No gas station, again, I'm gonna repeat, should be built within five hundred feet of a residential area, a lot size needs to be two acres. Neither one of these apply to the Stewart area, and it's even worse for us on Over Rocker Road, which the lawyer for Stewart's quantified with saying, well, this isn't even as bad as the Over Rocker Road area, but neither one should be allowed. We expect you not to take a vote tonight to consider, and consider all of our comments. And by the way, when we were going through our problems with the Over Rocker Road project, I was at other zoning board meetings when more deliberations, I just sat and listened to other deliberations about other matters, like a, a one-foot variance on a fence, somebody wanted to put a parking area in their yard, and I saw more deliberation and consideration for such small matters from the zoning board than the, than these huge projects that would hugely impact the residents, not only in our quality of life, I lived here since nineteen seventy-one, when it was residential, but also the environment and safety issues. So, but then, Todd Tancredi and Neil Wilson, who was like, uh, he was even a full-time planning board member, they were in charge of this. And when the final zoning board meeting, um, was, no, they, I was there for the final deliberations and the agree, you know, the agreement to this zoning board, all the eight variances and a special use permit, Neil Wilson, who was from the planning board, was at a zoning board meeting, he was sitting next to the head of the zoning board, and he leaned over and whispered something to the zoning board head before the zoning board gave final approval to eight variances and a special use permit. It was so obvious that they had already planned to do what they wanted to do, and that was just plain wrong. I was very naive then, I am not naive now. The zoning board should be ethical, and when I've contacted the state, counties, they say they always try to rely on the local town officials to do the right thing for their citizens, and you have failed so drastically. Don't do it again, not only for the Stewart project, but for our project. You should do the right thing and adhere to your zoning laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's someone on a cell phone with the last three numbers, three, seven, one, who has unmuted themselves, did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, what's your name?
Gail Mills.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, what would you like to say?
Well, I was on, uh, a few of these meetings, and, you know, I, I know that they did, like, the traffic survey and things like that. The problem is, is when they do these things, it's not in actual real time. They did that last year. Okay, so yeah, school was in session, yeah, you know, we had a regular schedule and everything like that, but they didn't take into account, you know, that they're putting apartment buildings in, you know, a block and a half away, that that's gonna impact the area and, you know, bringing more traffic and more kids going to school and everything like that, more buses. And basically, I have to agree with everybody around here, there is no reason for this to be done. It was purchased with the knowledge that it couldn't be done, they changed their mind, they wanted to do it, they figured the town was an easy pushover because it has been in the past for Stewart's, and they figured, ah, you know, we'll push it, and we'll see, oh, we'll file for, they've been doing this all along. In the meantime, they have violated previous agreements that they had made on lighting situations and things like that, so they really don't have a good faith with the town and with the county, basic surrounding towns. So based on the fact that they don't supply us with good faith on other conditions, and they have violations outstanding on them, why are we giving them the opportunity again? Why are we going to allow our neighborhoods to be taken over by commercial areas that are breaking our variances, and our town board's letting them? It's a safety issue, it's a that house value issue, it's a quality of life issue for our residents. We need to address it, we need to stop it before it continues, because this is gonna be the last one. This is just gonna be the okay for the next and the next, oh, well, you let Stewart do it, oh, well, you know, they did this. No, it has to stop. We made the rules, stick to the rules, end of story. Please, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gregor had his hand up ten minutes ago. Stefan was trying to get through. Oh, let's see. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
I'll speak if who else is concerned.
I don't see his hand up over here, I'm sorry.
Come on up.
Sir. Got a one inch handout, can I hand it over here?
Yeah.
If it's sterile.
Yeah.
All right, state your name.
My name is Eric Cole, I'm attorney-in-law, representative of Malt Inc.
Mr. Cole, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Look, we've been here for a couple months, I need four minutes or so.
All right, you can have four minutes.
Mr. Cole, can you move the microphone a little closer to your mouth, please? Thank you.
Is that better? Better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the public tonight in prior hearings has set forth a sufficient basis for the ZBA to deny the requested variances. I have set forth both orally and in prior letters, a detailed resuscitation of numerous reasons why the variances should be denied. Stewart's counsel has failed to refute our arguments, and instead simply recites the area variance criteria without adequately responding to the arguments we have set forth. There is no basis in the record to grant the requested area variances, and a court would uphold the denial. On the other hand, should this board, despite the arguments advanced by the residents and myself, grant Stewart's requested variances, I submit respectfully that a court would find the decision arbitrary and capricious, and without supporting the record. My best example of this is the requested area variances from the town board requirements that gas stations be both located on a lot no less than two acres in size, and be separated by a distance, distance no less than five hundred feet from residential homes. You have in the record and before you the town's rationale for adopting these ordinances. They didn't do it lightly. They didn't do it without receiving comments from the public, fire and safety officials, and the town planner. After deliberation, the board adopted the town, town code requirements, the very ones that Stewart's now asks this board to ignore and substitute Stewart's and the ZBA's judgment for that of the town board. I submit the ZBA does not have that authority. While the ZBA is authorized to grant variances, those variances are controlled by the five criteria that Stewart's counsel has enumerated, and for which this board is familiar. Should the board determine that Stewart's has not met any one of those criteria, that alone, based upon the record, the totality of the circumstances, and the legislative intent in adopting these ordinances, would justify denying Stewart's request? So let me start with the substantiality of the variances. Stewart's is requesting a variance of four hundred and twenty-seven feet, or eighty-five point four percent from the five hundred foot buffer rule. They also request a variance of one point oh nine acres, or fifty-four point five percent from the two acre requirement. They seek four additional variances, including sixty-two point five percent for the front yard setback. These variances are indisputably significant. State law prohibits granting such variances, as they would violate the town board's legislative intent and general purpose for these ordinances. When viewing Stewart's significant variances requests together, it leads to the inevitable conclusion that the residents have been raising for months. This is too large of a project being shoehorned on too small of a lot. Which brings me to Stewart's self-created difficulty. The application was submitted with full knowledge that the proposed project did not comply with town zoning regulations. During last week's town board meeting, Councilman Krakauer stated, while he respected the ZBA's process, some decisions should be easy, and there are plenty of alternate sites for Stewart's to place its gas station. Approving Stewart's project will set a dangerous precedent, allowing gas stations to be constructed at any location simply based on the applicant's whim, creating an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, a detriment to the nearby properties, and adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions of the community. How can the ZBA say it has fulfilled its obligation to take a hard look at this application if it has not even considered alternate sites? We have heard, I got thirty more seconds. We have heard the applicant repeatedly rely upon the supposed precedent of Malabar Realty when it act, when in actuality the matters are easily distinguishable. The Malabar site has been used as a gas station since the nineteen thirties, well before the town adopted a zoning ordinance or sustainable land use plan, and prior to the lot size and buffer requirements. Any resident purchasing a home after nineteen thirty did so with knowledge of the close proximity of the gas station at the Malabar site. For the foregoing reasons, we ask this board to do the right thing, act in the best interest of the town's residents, and deny this application.
Anyone else from the public wish, who wishes comment? Um, Mr. Warner?
Uh, so my name is actually Matt Bowers.
Mr. Warner, excuse me, do you, excuse me, sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Um, yes, beginning again, I'm Matt Parish, I'm the president of Parish and Wiener Inc., a planning consulting firm whose offices are in White Plains, New York. I'm a civil engineer and full member American Institute, sorry, certified planners, uh, with over forty years of experience in drafting and reviewing zoning codes, many within the mid-hards scenario. I've also been consultant to municipal boards, developers, and community groups. I've been retained by the same client that Eric Cole just identified. Uh, given the short timeframe for comments, I'm gonna focus on the variance that I believe is the pri, is primary in terms of both sequence and importance. This project is asking for permission to violate the zoning requirement that gas stations can only be located in the zoning district if they're five hundred feet or more from the, from a residential area. However measured, whichever calculations you use, this proposal does not even come close to meeting that requirement. Thus, there's absolutely no argument that a gas station is not a permitted use on the subject property. Having reached that conclusion, the ZBA must then consider whether this should be reviewed as a request for an area variance, which is what the applicant assumes, and Mr. Glad in his statement, uh, assumed, or whether it properly must be reviewed as a request for a use variance. Now, the New York State law, under its town law's zoning board of appeals provisions, provides a very clear answer to that question. It establishes that where there is a request to locate on a site a particular land use that is not permitted on that site, it must be reviewed as a use variance. I should see parenthetically, zoning code is very clear. The fact that it used a dimension rather than made a map and showed where they can't be is irrelevant. What's relevant is that it is not a, now, a permitted use, and thus must be reviewed as a use variance. Now, a little, a little background, the legislature in nineteen ninety-four enacted this legislation specifically because it determined that the question of whether a land use should or should not be permitted must be reviewed differently than those of the typical yard and setback requests, which are considered as area variances. Obviously then, a determination of whether a gas station should be permitted on this site must precede any consideration of whether, whether the various setback variances should even be
If you could finish up?
I want, I'm almost finished.
Okay.
Mr. Glad gave you a bunch of criteria, but none of those criteria relate to what you have to consider under a use variance. I believe the applicant should be given the opportunity to present an application for a use variance, and the public the opportunity to comment on whatever documents the application submits on the subject. And I also like to emphasize what Mr. Cole has said, which is that it's the role of the ZBA to carefully consider this proposal, both in terms of its, its own, all of those aspects, but also the fact that the town has acted in a legislative decision not to permit zoning their gas stations unless they're further than five hundred feet. And so the violation of the intent of the town code would be a horrible precedent for this ZBA to set, to accept. Thank you very much, I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, in writing or whatever that your board or the applicant may have subsequently.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I don't hear or see anything. So, Mr. Glad, you want to respond to any of those comments?
Yeah, sure. I'll just address Nat Parish's comment first, since that is the freshest in mind. The use is permitted, it's a special permit use in this district, and we're seeking a variance from a dimensional restriction, so that's an area variance. Mr. Chairman, I believe you properly noted that the hardship aspect is a factor, but this, I just also want to point out that the statute acknowledges the hardship factor is non-determinative, and it doesn't preclude the grant of an area variance. And Stewart's seeks to develop the site which predates, as we know, the HB District Regulations, and Stewart's has not in any way caused or created of the dimensional non-conformities, and it is only self-created maybe in the sense that they seek to develop the site, and the difficulty is self-created, as is, it almost is in any other case. And then, I just want to move on quickly to the lot size. Again, I've said this, but the lot is not too small for the proposed use. The 2014 precedent, the lot was 0.81 acres. The Sunoco gas station, who was opposing Stewart's, their lot is 0.55 acres. And at 2646 South Road, which is a little bit north on Route 9, there's a 12-pump gas station and car wash facility located on 0.26 acres. And Stewart's lot is 0.94, which is bigger than all of those. And then I believe Rich Dandrea, our traffic consultant, has a couple of comments and clarifications on the traffic.
Yeah, good evening, Rich Dandrea from Mazer Consulting.
Mr. Andrea, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Yeah, so there's just a couple of items I wanted to touch on briefly. So our traffic study was conducted in December of last year. However, what we do when we do a traffic study for this type of development is just project the traffic volumes out to a future design year. In this case, we went out three years to identify what the traffic impacts would be at the full build of the project. In doing that, we account for background traffic growth, just typical traffic growth in the vicinity of the site, and we also account for other developments in the areas. We're counting for the traffic that's going to be generated by those potential developments or proposed developments under construction. So all that is wrapped up into our traffic analysis. The traffic study was reviewed by the Planning Board's Traffic Consultant, and was also reviewed by Department of Transportation, who all agreed with the results, the analysis results that were in there. We did recommend some potential timing modifications to the intersection of South Gate Drive, as well as other intersections along the Route 9 corridor. Those are going to have to be identified with, or further looked at with DOT as part of a highway work permit, which is required for some of the improvements Stewart's is going to be making at the intersection. So I think that as far as the traffic-related impact, there is no significant impact that's identified in our study, and the potential improvements will address anything that is existing. The other thing that I just wanted to touch on real quick was about the trucks. We did make a recommendation, or would commit to potentially having trucks from the north only, so that would alleviate a lot of the concerns that were brought up about trucks coming at the South Gate Drive driveway, and that would, the last thing I just wanted to touch on. Any questions, I'm happy to be answered.
Any questions from the board regarding the traffic study? Go ahead.
The trucks are going to come in from the north, but how are they going to get out? They have to go down South Gate Drive. Right, you can't exit on Route 9, can you?
Not from the northern driveway, but they can get out through South Gate Drive, and we had shown in the truck turning diagrams, that we were fully reviewed with the Planning Board, and I think we're showing to your board as well, that the truck can make the maneuvers getting out through South Gate Drive and out up to Route 9.
I would just add, those truck turning movements were reviewed and vetted by the Planning Board Traffic Consultant.
Can you help me understand a little bit how exiting onto South Gate Drive has a different impact than entering from that area? Can you help me understand that?
Chad, I don't know if you have the truck turning maneuvers available?
I do, yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is some of the truck turning. Gas tanker. Is this one here? So we show the truck coming from the north into the lot, they can drop the gas, and then they can pull right out on South Gate. To go back north on 9.
Right, but tell me how that exiting has a different impact than if you were to enter from the south?
I think entering from the south, we identified as would be a difficult maneuver for the truck, it's a wide turn maneuver that would have to take place, and you're already in the traffic flow, so you're taking that maneuver at a slow pace, and there's cars potentially behind that vehicle, and is trying to make that maneuver into the site, and as you're, for the truck exiting the site, they have to obviously wait for a gap in traffic to get out of the site, so they're not impacting traffic along the roadway.
We do show, this is Chad again from Stewart's, a tractor-trailer pulling into South Gate in and delivering to the store. I mean, this could easily be a tractor-trailer with gas as well, coming from the south, but our trucks do drop from the passenger side of the vehicle, so with this configuration coming from the south, it would be difficult to drop gas without some more maneuvering in the lot. That's why we are showing the gas tanker coming in from the north.
Okay, and if you can point on the, or indicate on your diagram, the lane, the exit lane, in the middle or across from the pumps, what's the space between that exit lane and where a car would be at the pumps? Do you understand my question?
Yes, so from the canopy here to the parking spaces?
No. Where your truck will be exiting?
Here.
How much room will be between where a car would be at the pump? And the truck?
You're saying like, a stacking?
So this is where the cars park at each dispenser.
So, does a car fit entirely under the canopy?
Yeah, I mean, there might be some trucks or pickup trucks that might hang out a little bit, but we generally show from the canopy to the parking spaces a minimum of 30 feet by design, and that usually is a good enough flow.
Okay. Tony, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Christine, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments that didn't have an opportunity to speak before? Yes, Mr. Cole. You know, I'm going to stop you just a second, there's a person behind you that raised her hand? If you would state your name?
Yes, Sarah Jane Ingles.
Ms. Ingles, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. I'm not here on this matter at all, and it's of interest to me only in that, has anybody considered the large number of people who travel on South Gate four or five times a week to go to the senior center? When you say that the trucks could exit onto South Gate, I know that there are a lot of seniors who come to the senior center. It is their place of recreation, is their place of socialization. A lot of them are elderly, and they are driving. I wonder if that's ever a consideration, that this would be an impediment to some of these people using South Gate Drive on a regular basis, especially our senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to comment? Did the traffic study take that into account?
I think the simplest way to answer that would be that any seniors that would be going to and from the senior center would have been captured in our existing conditions traffic counts, and therefore the traffic that's associated with that is incorporated in our traffic study.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cole, you want to say something? I'm sorry, Mr. Cole?
Sorry, just these deliveries are also infrequent, I think they're only once or twice a week, plus the truck is onsite, and it wouldn't exit the site until it had space to pull on to South Gate Drive.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Cole. Okay, but now you only get two minutes.
So I think the applicant made some misleading statements about the gas stations, the pre-existing smaller gas stations, but in a way, I think he's proven the public's point. Those are all existed prior to enacting the 500-foot buffer and the two-acre requirement. It's why we did enact the 500-foot buffer and the two-acre requirement. The same requirements are now asking you to disregard, to advance into their own agenda. So, I'll leave it at that.
I did briefly see a hand raised, but then it went down, so I don't know why. Is there somebody else who was looking to provide a comment on the Zoom call? Somebody who we haven't heard yet from? Just check the chat to make sure there wasn't anybody there.
Mr. Wermer seems to be raising his hand.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Wermer, I think, was raising his hand, but...
And Mr. Parish, was he raising his hand?
I didn't see that.
Okay. No, he is, wait, I think he was talking. Hold on, Mr. Parish, you are muted, maybe we can fix that for you. Mr. Parish, you're still muted, sir. There we go. Oh, no, you just did it again, there you go.
Okay, what would you like to say?
Oh, he did it again.
No, you're muted again, Mr. Parish. One more time, hit the button.
Am I okay now?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Glad made the point that the 500-foot requirement makes this an area variance. That's silly. There's nothing in the state law whatsoever, or in any of the zoning texts, that preclude the use of the use variance criteria, just because the board has elected to establish a description of where the gas station should or should not be permitted, and they have used a dimension to do that. They could very well have created an exhibit map with exactly the same information, and with some symbols shown where it could be and where it couldn't be. So the fact that they elected to use what they believe would be very clear is the 500-foot dimension in no way, shape, or form changes the intent and the language of both the intent and the language of the state statute, and the way it needs to be interpreted. Mr. Glad has created his own interpretation, but has no basis. And the importance of that is, once you arrive that you need to use it, to consider it as a use variance, then you must use a whole different set of criteria than those that Mr. Glad went through in his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to comment?
I'm not seeing anybody else.
Okay, in addition to the public comments we've just heard, there were a number of written submissions from different parties, including Keenan Bean, as well as the applicant, and some private citizens, those will all be made part of the record, I won't be reading those into the record, however. I would say that, in light of the fact that we don't have a full board tonight, and the fact that it requires four affirmative votes to pass any variance tonight, I'd like to have some discussion with the board about...
Robert, you have to stop, I have to talk now.
Oh, Phyllis?
Mr. Chair, I was going to suggest that rather than having a discussion about this matter now, what I think may work is if the board concludes the public participation portion of the meeting now, so because I think everybody that wanted to speak has had an opportunity to speak, but given that there are, I think, four other variances, people waiting for public hearings, what you may want to do is postpone the decision about whether to close the public hearing, or adjourn the public hearing until after we hear, at least have the public hearing portion of the rest of the meeting, and that might help the homeowners who then wouldn't have to sit through any deliberation by this board on this matter.
You don't think they're excited about a resolution?
I have a question. Linda Mack, I have a question. Can I ask one question? Can I ask one question?
Again, this is not a question and answer period.
Well, no, are you going to make a deliberation tonight? That's all I'm asking.
We haven't decided that yet.
Oh, so you can make a deliberation after we've all been silenced, and not know until after the fact?
This is a public hearing, the deliberation will be public, I'm not clear of the timing of it as yet, because we haven't decided.
Well, I would hope, after all of our comments, you would hold off on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So Lisa, you're suggesting that we simply end the public comments, and...
I would suggest that we move through the rest of the agenda, and then return to this matter.
Okay, procedurally, do we just move to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, then procedurally, we'll move to Item 3, a building height variance for MHTC Development LLC, 4248 East Dale Avenue. Is there anyone here for that application?
Yes, Mr. Jeff Kane.
Mr. Kane, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, share my screen, is that permissible?
Yeah, go ahead.
Your connection isn't that good, though, Jeff, so... Okay, we see your slide presentation?
Okay, alright, so we're now... I lose you.
Jeff, we're not... We're not hearing you. Should we maybe come back to this?
Yes, why don't we do the... Are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can't really hear you.
Okay, let me see what I can, maybe you can come to me in a moment? I'll see if I can repair my...
Yeah, I think we're going to have to come back to Jeff, maybe?
Okay, try to repair my connection, then come back.
Alright, so we're going to step past you just for a second, okay? And, Item Number 4 is Mark and Joanne Mizurak, 13 Peckham Road. I need to recuse myself on this one, so Christine, I would ask that you take this.
Okay. Mark or Joanne Mizurak, are you available here? Come on up, please. Okay, you just sit down, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Is the microphone's working?
Yes. Yeah, you might want to move yours, though, a little closer to your, if you could pull yours down just a little bit. Thank you. That'll be good.
Do you each swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Please go ahead and tell us about your application.
Okay, it's for our shed. And our inspector, well, the inspector came by and looked at it, and he suggested that we put...
Harding board.
Oh, Harding board on the outside of the rear, the rear of the shed. And on the inside of the rear of the shed, we put three-quarter inch...
Five-eighths inch.
Three-quarter inch.
No, five-eighths inch.
Five-eighths inch.
X board.
Fire-rated sheet rock.
X board.
And he came and looked at it, and he complied. And what he said...
The shed was there when we moved to the house, so we just maintained it.
So you were just making some repairs to it?
This is very difficult to hear for the audience.
Well, over the years, Mark put a new roof on it.
You know, and maintained it. We maintained it. We use it, and we're selling our house. We have a buyer, and we want to go. Yeah.
So we complied with what the inspector told us to do, so...
Do we have any questions? Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom that would like to comment on this application?
If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand. If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute. And I am not seeing anyone.
Okay. Well, if there are no other, no questions from anyone, we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I have a...
Second.
Thank you. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Us?
No. One recusal.
And one recusal. Thank you.
You can tell them that they can either wait for the decision.
Okay. And if you, you can go back to your seat and you can wait until the end, or you can just go ahead and call the zoning department tomorrow to get the result.
We'll call Mark.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll try. Ken?
If you want to maybe move through these resumes once, but...
All right, next is Ken McCullough, Cornerstone Carpentry, 59 Crestwood Boulevard. Is there someone here for that one? Yeah, there's someone waving, waving, Tim?
Tim, all right. Let me see if I can help you unmute, Tim. Do you see a request to unmute?
Yeah, there we go.
There you go. Okay, speak right into the microphone for us, okay?
Yes, sir.
What's your name?
My name is Tim Mummer, and I'm representing Ken McCollough, and this is in reference to, to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared. I need the address here. 59 Crestwood Boulevard. It's for a setback on the rear deck on the house.
Okay, excuse me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. We're seeking a, a variance on the side setback between the property line and the future deck. The existing house is about six foot, six inches from the property line, and we want to set the deck back an additional 12 inches. So it would be 12 inches less than what the house is, so approximately seven foot, six inches.
Okay, so when we went out there, there were some lines drawn and some flags. Can you give me a...
Yes.
Help me figure out what those all represented?
That's where the future, that's the footprint of the future deck.
So is the deck attached to the building?
Yes, sir.
So how, there's a, a door sticking out from the side of the house, up above, above grade?
Yeah, that's a, that's the porch. That was a structure that was built. That's going to get removed. And the cinder block cellar below that is going to stay as kind of a, I guess, garden storage. So the new deck would go right over the top of that.
So when you say right over the top of it, you mean it's going to go towards, attach the other parts of the house and surround that?
Yeah, there'll be a, there's going to be a ledger board on the, on the, on the house itself, and then the deck will come over and, and go past that cellar.
How high will the deck be off the ground?
I think it's about seven feet max.
All right, so it's...
The lot does have a bit of a slope down, but I don't think it goes...
All right, so it's gonna, you're gonna be able to exit from that door onto the deck?
From the door, there is a rear door that's in the, that little mudroom porch right now.
Right.
That rear door will exit onto the deck correctly.
And, okay, well, all right. Art, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Tony?
No, you cleared it up.
Really? Phyllis?
Well, the, the back of the house, you cleared that up. Thank you.
Okay. Phyllis, did you have any questions?
Just, the deck is going to be, how far across the back of the house, sir, please?
About 19 foot, I believe.
So it's gonna go pretty much the whole width of the back of the house?
No, it's not the whole width of the house. There's actually what, I guess, when the house was originally built, there's a garage down there, a lower, a lower garage.
Okay.
And it's probably gonna intrude about two or three feet onto that. It's probably, it's gonna take up good, I'm gonna say, 60 to 70% of the back of the house.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Another question?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not going to extend further than the line of the house?
No, no. No, in fact, on the, on the side that we're seeking the variance on, I'm actually gonna set the deck back 12 inches into the existing structure, just to kind of, you know, buy my, buy a little bit of space there.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this?
Again, if you're in, on Zoom, you can raise your hand or to speak up. If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Not seeing anyone.
I don't see or hear anyone. In that case, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those, well, any discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
And again, you can either wait or find out tomorrow.
I'll, I'll call tomorrow.
Okay.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
And next is number six. This is 14 Townsend Boulevard. Again, this, I must, I have to recuse myself on this one. Christine, if you don't mind.
Okay. Come on up.
Can you tell me how many things you have for tonight?
There's, do you have the agenda in your hand?
I only have the one for Russell Lello. That's what I'm here for, and it's set at 6:00 o'clock.
Next.
I was just curious, because I've never been to one of these meetings, and I was like, how many things can we add here?
Gotcha. Okay, would you state your name?
I'm Sarah Jane Angles. For Auburn Hill.
Do, do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
All right, what would you like, what's your, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Please tell us about your application.
Okay, what we're looking for is a variance of about two feet, I believe, two inches. When we had this porch put on about 40 years ago, the setback was 15 feet from the property line next door. It extends less to that property than our existing house, but the existing house was built in 1915. Now we understand that the setback is 20 feet, and we're just asking for a variance of two feet, two inches. Our neighbors have, there's only one neighbor on that side. The porch west window looks over their garage and a non-entry area of their house. They have no objections. They're friends and neighbors, and this is a permanent structure. So we're just looking for a variance to be able to keep it there.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody from the board like to ask any questions? Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom that would like to comment about this application?
Once again, if you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or just speak up. If you're on a phone, star six to unmute.
Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed, and we have one recusal.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Next is number seven. This is a request for a special use permit for an accessory apartment. Frank and Antoinette Rusolelo, Rusolelos, 9 Darrellane. Is anyone there from, from, okay?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. You say your name?
Antoinette Rusolelo.
Ms. Rusolelo, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Well, I have elderly parents. They're 94 and 97, and they are unable to live on their own anymore. They're currently living at the fountain in Millbrook in the independent living section. My father has dementia. They're both in walkers. And my, my dad broke his hip back in January, and since then, my mom has been having a very difficult time trying to care for him, especially since she's in a walker also. So we would like them to move in with us, but we have to make some accommodations for them downstairs in order for them to live with us, one of which is to, we're converting the garage, or we'd like to convert the garage into a bedroom and a handicap accessible bathroom. Right now, the bathroom we have downstairs would not be close enough to the bedroom for them to just take over one of the bedrooms. They need to be next to each other. As you can imagine, for their age, they need to get to the bathroom quickly in the middle of the night. So we thought that we would instead make the garage a bedroom and a bathroom for them, and the current room, that's not really a bedroom downstairs, it's an office, would be a little kitchenette area where my mom would just be able to microwave and make scrambled eggs and things like that for breakfast. I would do the cooking, obviously, for the rest of the day. And our, our playroom downstairs is going to be converted into their living area. So we're doing that really just because they can no longer live by themselves. I have seven children. The youngest is now 21, so, you know, most of them are out of the house. So we're moving their bedrooms upstairs, the, the couple that are still in college that come home during that time. I have two other sons who are living at home still as well. So we're kind of just rearranging the whole house so they can come in and out as they, you know, without going upstairs. I have a raised ranch, so we really can't accommodate them upstairs. They have to just be able to walk in downstairs. And we just want, you know, we just want the, the remainder of their lives to be the best that they can have and the best that they, we can offer them, so we are trying to make those accommodations for them.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, you're going to reside in the, in the property?
Oh, yes, yes. We're going to be taking care of them. I'm already the, the caretaker and the healthcare provider, just in terms of I, I go there and I spend a couple of nights a week, and it's just getting to be a lot to be there half the week and at home half the week, so I just want them to move in with me.
And they'll have their own entrance to the, to the apartment?
Yes, the garage will be, will have an entrance way right so that they don't, they, they can't really walk up and downstairs very easily, so we're trying to make that accessible to them.
And tell me this, do you have town water and, and/or sewer?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right.
And there is already both of those downstairs because we do have a bathroom down there already, a full bath. It's just very small, and it, the shower is small enough that you can't fit a chair in there, so it's not really handicap accessible, which is why we're creating a new bathroom for them, and, you know, from the garage.
Okay. And the, the plans that you submitted have the dimensions, the area of both the existing house and the proposed apartment, correct?
Yes. Yes, we're not adding anything for the, to the downstairs. It's just the existing space that we already have.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions. You covered everything.
Anyone from the community, from the public who wishes to comment on this?
No, I'm just a neighbor. I just wanted to know what their intentions were. Just to hear what they were trying to do.
Okay. All right, well, hearing nothing.
Let me just check on the Zoom call. I'm not seeing anyone with a raised hand. Or anyone else who wanted to speak up on this one? No?
All right. Hearing and seeing nothing, I have moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is closed. Now we'll go back to item three.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So again, you can stay and listen, or you can find out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And you can stay and listen and find out, Art, to find out tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll find out tomorrow. I want to know what the intention was. It's something they were, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, so Jeff, how we doing?
Yes, is this any... Still not coming.
Not much better.
Well, file me three more minutes to mature the thing, if I could.
You gonna try sharing a screen again? You can, if you want to try, yeah.
Well, can I, can I reboot, come back and let's...
We could try that, or do you want to perhaps put the computer on mute and call on your cell phone or on a phone?
The, I can. The, the graphics helpful. I think if you just give me just a minute, let me, my, is it, let me, let me try this one more time.
Or Jeff, if you want, you can email me the graphics, and I can probably share them if they're emailable.
Yes, they are. Give me, give me a moment here.
The radio business would be really bad, dead air like this. Yeah. You don't want to let that happen. Lisa, did you get email?
Nothing comes, has come through yet.
Okay. It looks like Jeff dropped off. Maybe he is trying to reboot quick.
If we want to start, perhaps resume some discussion with Stewart's while we have a little bit downtime and then if we see that Jeff comes back.
That's kind of hard to do.
It is. Yeah, I'm, I've been receiving emails, but nothing from Jeff.
Okay. Shall we put, we'll see if Jeff's still around at the, at the end?
We can deliberate on those where we've closed the public hearing, right? Lisa?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize.
There are a couple of applicants that are here. We could deliberate on those applications.
Yes, you can.
Okay. So let's see. Christine, you want to do number six? I think they're here.
Sure. Okay. Item number six, Sarah Jane and Robert Inglis, 14 Townsend Boulevard.
I'd like to speak.
What?
Who's that?
Hello?
Linda's iPhone.
Linda's iPhone.
This is Linda Lentz. I've been waiting all night to speak on the Eastdale thing and now are we going to address that tonight or what?
It is tonight there. We're having some technical difficulties. We haven't discussed it yet. If you want to stand by?
Okay. Yeah, I guess. I've been waiting an hour and a half. What's another hour and a half? Thank you.
Okay.
Sarah Jane and Robert Inglis, 14 Townsend Boulevard. Are there any comments from the board about this application?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Tony? Any other comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Phyllis?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I didn't have any other concerns.
Okay. So I will go through the findings. Okay. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the, of the area variance. Just reviewing this here for a moment. Yeah, with me. So they're, they're looking for a variance for an accessory structure requiring a two feet, two inch variance. I don't think that an undesirable change will be produced by the character. It's, this has been here for a while. Is that correct? Okay. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Again, the enclosed porch has been in existence for about 40 years and to, it wouldn't be feasible to move it anyplace else. It's, it's been there for all those years. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. It's really, again, since it's been, it's so close to the lot line, it's really not It's only two feet, two inches. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or districts, since it's always been there for 40 years or more, I don't think that it's going to have any adverse effect or impact. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but not necessarily precluding the granting of the area variance. Again, the addition has been there all that time and I don't think it was self-created. And that's it. So move. Help me out here.
Would you like me, Phyllis?
So someone's got to read the.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tony had something to say.
Tony, did you have something to say?
No, I just wanted to know if you wanted me to present the motion.
That would be great. Thank you.
I was trying to assist you.
I appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve the area variance requested in item number six. I move that the board approve the request for the areas various set forth there. The decision is based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing and the results of site visits by board members in approving this variance. Excuse me. The board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. Christine, that's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed and one recusal.
Thank you very much.
What was that? Unless you'd like to stay and keep us company here.
All right. So I think we can go to a couple that aren't here. Do you want to do, you want to break or do you want to do number four?
Oh, I might as well do it. Let me just see. Yeah. So this is for item number four. Mark and Joanne Mizurek, 13 Peckham Road. Are there any other comments from the board? Any, any other?
No, it's been there for what they say.
None.
Been there a long time, a lot, number of years, so I don't, and they met the requirements of the inspector, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Tony, Phyllis?
No concerns.
Okay.
All good.
Okay. Okay. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. This shed, this shed has been here for over 33 years, so I don't think it's going to change the character in the neighborhood. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Again, the shed has been there for, for over 33 years, so you know, other than tearing it down and moving it someplace else, I don't think that they could do that any other way. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. It's a nine by 12 shed. It's not, it's not terribly substantial and it's, it's been there for 33 years. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. I don't think it will have any adverse effect. It's, it hasn't been a problem for all those years. And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision by the board, but shall not necessarily preclude, preclude the granting of the area variance. Again, they didn't just put it up. It's been there. The shed has been in place since they, since the applicant moved in. Those are the findings. Would, Art, would you make the motion, please?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item four. Right, four, yeah. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts these findings, those set forth by the chair with no restrictions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed and one recusal.
Thank you. Next is number five, 59 Crestwood Boulevard. This is a application for a variance setback of seven feet from the side property line. I'm sorry, requiring a 13-foot variance. I would make these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It appears that almost every house in neighborhood does have a rear deck and that does, that won't change the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for an applicant to pursue other than area variance, based upon the lot sizes, there's no way to attach anything to the house without needing a variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial. Numerically, so, but since this is within the building line of the house, it does not appear to be substantial. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no indication for that. And whether this was self-created, it is indeed self-created in the sense that the, any, any addition to the house would require a variance, but that's not a basis to decline it and I would make those findings. I would also move to accept or move to pass the variance in item number five for a 13-foot variance to build a deck. Any discussion?
No.
Any comments?
None.
All right. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Then that carries five zero.
Who is the second on that motion, please?
Me.
Art?
Art.
Thank you.
Okay. And then regarding the accessory, the special use permit, item number seven.
Here you have a staff report, which I know I was only able to send today.
What else?
I forgot that I needed to do it until this afternoon, so I apologize for the short notice.
All right. Well, it appears that the applicant meets all the criteria for a special use permit. It meets the area and dimensional and size things. It is an unlisted action, so I would. Well, I would make a motion that there's no, there's, well, first of all, I would make a motion that we be the lead agency for an environmental impact.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion's carried and based upon the short form environmental assessment form, I find there's no impact in the environment and so move. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That passes. And then, Phyllis, would you make this motion for a special use permit?
Sure. I move to approve the special, the request for a special use permit in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony and the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries five zero. And now, is Mr. Kane back?
He is. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I mailed that to Lisa. I'm not sure if she's got it yet, but let me try. If we have a good connection, let me clear the screen and see if that works.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
And, can you see it?
Yes.
And you, all right, making progress. So let me, let me start and thank you for providing the technical difficulty. I think the first thing I want to be clear about is that the variance, area variance allow four-story buildings worth half stories. There is no variance requested and I, and I make this point because agenda says it's a height variance. I don't give us how the, the public hearing was, was related, but there is, there is no height variance. We're not asking for a height variance. We're asking variance merely to go to create a four-story building where three and a half stories. Site-wide restricted buildings, the ones that are set really the, from the existing family residence on these properties. And here's a, a kind of show where we're talking about. The Stern Pike Route 44 is the top of the page here. A dark place is, is on the side and its buildings, we number them 16, 17, and 18. These are the three that are set, the furthest back that are proposed. So the, and this is all the development for the west side of, for the east side of 44 for, for Eastdale. And just to explain the map a little more, on top of that, next to 44 are mixed-use buildings. These are two to three-story building, four stories are permitted. We haven't, we don't use her at this point who's asked a four-story building, but the development this side of the road mirrors what's happening on the inside, a two and three mixed-use buildings. Along residences and dead place, these are two-story townhouses and so there's no risk to, to, to go beyond two stories on these buildings. They were developed as, in the secret, if you'll call, we, we prepared an environmental impact that the planning board was the agency on, but the nature of transitioning from the denser development to turn it to Eastdale over to these single homes is that the story homes were the next, were the appropriate building to transition over to the neighborhoods. That's not going to change. So really those four-story structures, these three in middle furthest from the, from the, from neighbors, you can see there are 380 feet to the nearest neighbor on the, on the north where there's some valleys and 175 feet to the nearest neighbor the south, although note that those are also those houses on the, on the, it's probably two houses there. Those are in the inmate zone like the Eastdale Village, a single family zone is that on the, so there is a difference there. Again, three and a half permitted. With the add of residential floor in three and a half story building. Here's the, I, I know the proposed elevation for a four-story building. The half story is defined in the code. The roofline would have to meet the exterior wall way down the walls. Really this roofline would eliminate a row of, of those and really kind of change the look of the, of the, of the building and it would impact your construction and attack the interior losing usable space. So we're looking to keep this as a, as a four-story building in the four residential And so here's the three buildings we have on the other side of the street and again to compare it to, we have the, kind of the regular windows, the gables, and those are, those are again matched on the, on the, the four-story elevator and looking to keep that consistent look and architectural feel on the, on the, throughout the site. So the balancing act that the board has to undergo and the, number one, will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties granting the area variance? We submit that no, there's, there's change. The proposed change, there's no proposal in the height of the building. We really, it's an internal design of. it's an internal design of conventional floors to lead to that in four stories instead of three and a half, because that'll be more efficient, useful, consistent with the other building. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? And they really have a feasible goal of affordability, functionality, and consistency for floors of residential units and half-story buildings. As for the top, those significantly reduced in height, reduce the interior lighting, causing and right on facade, and then functionality is reduced, and certainly the costs will be increased due to the irregular construction methods, having the sloping roof intersecting those cycles. Yeah, the area variance... No, it's not. Again, it doesn't increase the density on the site, it doesn't increase the allowable height, and these are already allowed within the zones, it was said even at present within the M-H zone for four-story buildings. Will it have an adverse impact or effect on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district? Again, the planning board conducted a rigorous secret review and determined that the impacts were successfully mitigated, but the allow doesn't change. The, anything except for the interior doesn't impact the government or district. The buildings are, as I said before, 170 feet to the nearest neighbor to the south and 380 feet to the nearest neighbors, but there's also a setback, 130 feet is a building and 700 feet from 44, furthest building. So they're saying well about, well back from it, the potential viewer of the... And it's created, we see it's not self-created, it's a function trying to match the design, but again, we understand this is part of your balance in the review. So, do you have any question? I have a couple other things I'd like to say, if there are questions, the board, I get Angelo at this point.
Christine, do you have any questions?
Yes, you were breaking up a little bit, so you may have said this, but how much higher is the four-story building than the three and a half story? How many feet?
The, I don't know the number, but they all fit within the five-foot, I'm sorry, foot height requirement.
Say that again, Jeff.
They're, are less than the maximum of feet, I don't know the exact height, the three-story buildings.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, same question again, because you're breaking up pretty badly. So you're not going to exceed the height requirements at all?
Correct.
Okay, that's, okay, I'm good, thanks.
All right, Tony, do you have any questions?
Just two, again, going back to the height requirement, the height requirement does not exceed the height requirement, is that including the horizontal roofline or the copula that was pictured?
Right, oh, the, as the town measures height, right, talk about that, Chris, cupulas are excluded from the measurement of height, so I believe this cupula would be taller than 50 feet, but it, but it's not what's considered by the code for the building.
Okay, my next question is, these are the three southernmost buildings in the property?
Yes, we call them east, some people call them, they're nuts.
Okay, when you're going towards Pleasant Valley, they would be to the right.
And 30 feet to the, you know, 18, 130, 16.
I'm just saying, they're off to the right-hand side as you're going towards Pleasant Valley.
That is correct, Tony, they're on the right-hand side as you're heading out to Pleasant Valley.
Okay, I'm good.
Phyllis?
I'm confused by how the extra space would not impact the density of the project. Isn't it adding an additional floor of living space on each of those buildings?
So, that is set at a zoning, six building units per acre. So, the, what our proposal is, a four-floor of residential density is impacted by the zoning code levels. We do four-floor residential density in a three-and-a-half-story building, but the fourth floor is impacted by the zoning code requirements for a fourth floor. It's a more functional building, it's a more attractive building, and it's a more, we think, appropriate building for the users to have that top floor be a full floor, not a half floor.
I think she wants to know whether it's the same number of units in a three-and-a-half and a four-story building. I think that's what's her question.
Yes, absolutely, same number of units.
That's the part that was confusing me, so...
Sorry, hang on a question.
All right, all right. I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, if you would change your screen so that we can see if there's anyone else in the public who wants to comment on this.
Sure, just one of the things, if I could, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Martin had submitted questions, and I wanted to discuss those briefly. One was, you know, related to views in the site, and I have a couple slides here. This is from the environmental impact statement, which identified, and the town conducted this visual act, I said, look at the critical views into the site, this location sign isn't it from Darrow Place, looking into the site, and this building here is in 18, both of you for looking inside, and on the hand side is the pre-developed view into the site, and the right-hand side is a development view into the site. What you see here, so the structure is not a story building, this is the two-story townhouse. So the views from the place into the site, they're intercepted by these two-story buildings, it's not as if there's a four-story building on the edge of the place. So, there were a couple of things Martin raised, and I, on the, in the audience, and answer any question, it's not a building height, it's half-story, even here, our picture, but the evidence into the building. It's not to the building in 25 feet of Darrow Place, it's those buildings furthest away from the places. There is significant landscaping along the property line separating the village from the neighbors, it's just an issue, it's been the planning board, just to, the, here at the bottom, this line here is the prop that was for significant escaping of overgrown contiguous trees along this, to really saw into and out Eastdale to the neighbors. And for noise, noise, it's been addressed by the planning board, we've continued to build in compliance with the town's no-ordinance. I know there have been a couple of instances of non-compliance, and my bottle, we will look to control those constantly, publicly and overall, this is a secret to that, been addressed as part of the IAS.
Okay, thank you. And now, if there's anyone from the public who wants to comment on this?
You can raise your hand or just simply unmute yourself if you'd like.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, Linda.
Listen, I didn't swear. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, will you state your name?
My name is Linda Lentz.
Ms. Lentz, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is, yes.
All right.
507, which is...
What would you like to say?
Okay, I live on 29 Darrow Place. My, I have concerns about the project, we've had concerns all along. This is the 11th amendment to the project, I can almost wallpaper my living room with all the letters from the town telling me about the next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting. My concern with the four-story buildings, there are no four-story buildings, even when you get into the city of Poughkeepsie till you get past McDonald's. We don't do four-story buildings, and I don't know whether we're building a town center or we're building another city. I, this little town center has gotten bigger and bigger, more changes, more changes, more changes. I live on the top of Darrow Place, there's a little hill, so I'm going to be looking at rooftops and probably into apartment buildings now because the buildings are going to be so high. And I don't understand what the 50-foot is, 50-foot does not include the roof, or it does include the roof? I can't, I didn't understand that because it's terminology I don't know. But my concern is that the project has just gotten out of control, and we've talked before, and our views have gone mute to the town, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm not happy with all the changes and the ability for them to just come in here, plow right through, and do whatever they want, and you guys just allow it to happen. I know it's a money-making business for you all, and from what I'm understanding, by putting up four stories, they will save money on construction. That was put in there, but it wasn't emphasized, so it's going to cost them more money to put up a three-and-a-half-story building than it is a four-story building. So it's a money saver for them and just another nightmare for the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I think, Mr. Martin, you were unmetted before, you want to try unmeeting again?
Here we go.
Okay, if you would state your name?
Yes, Brett Martin, 15 Darrow Place.
Mr. Martin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say?
I appreciate, Jeff, your comments on my letter that I've submitted. I try not to waste the time of you, yourself, your workers, the board, or anybody else, so I try to submit things in writing when I have my thoughts best composed, and people can review what I have to say on their time. And I appreciate you addressing some of these issues, but again, again, I'm a little concerned about the fact that we've set precedent by having the Frank Brothers homestead sequestered, if you want to say, with a privacy fence, so that people won't be trespassing on his property, dogs won't be running around, et cetera, et cetera, and yet for the five contiguous residences on Darrow Place that you're only planning on having deciduous trees and some bushes, I just don't feel that that really provides the privacy that the residents are used to, and it may cause problems in the future, so that's my one thing. The other thing is, with a four-story building, the cupula, I guess, can exceed 50 feet, which is, we're getting up there. I hope that the Arlington Fire District has been consulted on this, in that I don't even know if they have equipment, because in their district, they don't have a building of this size at this time, so I hope that that's been taken into consideration as well. I wouldn't want to see your project go up in flames, because we didn't have the fire protection that we need for a 50-plus tall building. So, for now, that's all I have, but I will continue to monitor, and I appreciate you addressing the issues of the Darrow Place residents, especially those of us who've been here 40 or 50 years, and it is a little disconcerting to us to have our house shaking all day long, and doors rattling, and china being bounced around on shelves, but we're trying to work with you, as I hope you're trying to work with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on this application?
There's someone raised their hand, Ms. Lucky's two, is that gentleman from earlier?
Mr. Peters.
Yeah, Mr. Peters, right, yeah.
Hi. They want to go to four stories, and I've lived, I've lived on Three Shamrock Circle, and I've noticed the impact that this project has had on the travel, the traffic, and everything else. I think it was a big mistake, well, I wanted to get this big, and giving them another story is just going to add more residencies and more traffic, so I'm totally against this four stories. And I don't know if you've consulted with the building department yet for height, but the code has changed, and also the fire department should be contacted as well. So I just want to go on record that I don't see the need for four stories over there. It's already a cluster over there, and it looks unsightly, and this is just going to make it look even worse. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Not seeing anyone else with a raised hand, or...
All right. So, Mr. Kane, did you want to respond to any comments, or...
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Martin. You know, I guess a couple of things, one, not opposed to a fence along that property line there, and happy to address that, the site plan, the planning board, and further, I think, I understand, I know that it's a ZB, due for discussion tonight, but we're certainly not to privacy fence along the rear of the residences there. The other issue that has been raised a couple of times, four-story buildings and the Arlington Fire Department, there are, Vassar College is a nine-story building, Executive Towers is another, and I think that's either eight or nine stories there. Arlington Fire Department has the equipment to handle tall buildings, and this is certainly not the only one in the town. And Arlington Fire Department has reviewed these plans, they made comments on the site plan where it was first proposed, they've made comments on the environmental review done, again, there was environmental impact analysis done for the, looking at the potential impacts of a four-story building, and they've been involved in the process from day one. So those issues have really been vetted out through the fire department to their satisfaction. Our hydrant, stand pipe, fire departments, fully apartments, so that's really something that we take very seriously here, and has been incorporated into the design of buildings. And I think the other thing that's, again, it's, to this, adding a story from three-and-a-half to four is really of the zoning code, it's not about how many floors of resident development there are. And the purpose of the variance is to allow the development from three-and-a-half to four stories in a manner that meets those of the applicant, and those being functionality, being aesthetic appearance base, and the affordability of the development. So this variance is really a way to be able to meet those goals with four potential floors. See, it doesn't change statewide, it doesn't change the building, it's the manner in which to best meet the goal of adding this floor of the zoning.
Mr. Kane, can I ask you a question?
Should ask it to the mic. Should ask it to the mic, oh.
Oh, I was close. Mr. Kane, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Chrissy, zoning administrator, can you confirm that the building height at grade is between the, is the medium, median height between the Eves and Ridge at the Gable? It's 50?
Right, again, the way that the code finds building height is the average grade at the front door will point midway between Ridge and the Eave.
So you can confirm that it's 50 feet between?
Less than 50 feet, by, by that definition.
Okay, thank you.
Cubla, cubla fires, those don't impact in height definitions in the town code, so the cubo sits on top of that E, would, would extend 50 feet, but doesn't extend the, the definition of building height.
Okay.
So, is it, does the code say to the peak, or does it say?
It's the, between Ridge and the Gable.
Okay. So you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, if you confirm that's, that's less than 50 feet at this point.
You comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any, any other comments? All right, then, hearing nothing, I'll close the public portion of this, of this meeting. And.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we can discuss this now, or do you want to go on to?
It's up to you, this, we still have a number of people on for, for the other application as well.
Okay. All right, so, why don't we go back, we're going to go back to Stewart's for a moment, and keeping in mind that we don't have a full board, and it requires four affirmative votes to pass a variance, I would remind the board and, and the community that the purpose of the zoning board of appeals is not to write laws, not to enforce laws, but to grant relief to property owners when appropriate, based upon certain zoning laws. And so, I would just like informally to get an idea about how many people would be in agreement with granting the variances for Stewart. Christine, let me start with Phyllis.
I'm, I, at this point, I'm not in favor of the variance, citing the 500 feet, it's quite a variance that we'd have to give them, and it's a community location, and I think that the gas station would change the character of the nation, of the community.
Okay, and Tony?
Even though it's on, even though it's on Route 9.
All right, and Tony?
At this point, I think I am in favor of granting the variance.
Okay, and Art?
I am not in favor of it. It'd be a major change, and, you know, they're comparing it to the one on 44, that was in business since, they said, what, 1930, 1940. I think it's a, it's a big difference. This is a brand-new use for that property, so I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. And Christine, I don't have to put you on the spot. So, for the applicant, I, I would offer you this.
We scratch off whatever kind of.
Dollar ones, or?
The what?
Dollar ones?
No, the, um.
Well, yeah, never a good idea to put the supervisor on mute, but I think he didn't mean to have his microphone on, based on the conversation, so, and if I'm wrong, Jay, I apologize.
And so, I would offer the applicant this, we could have a vote tonight, or, if you request, we could adjourn till the next meeting when there is a more full board.
Yes, we would like to adjourn, please.
Okay, then I would make a motion to adjourn item number two to our December meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so item number two is adjourned till next month, and I, I think that resolves, unless I missed something, I think that resolves all the issues for tonight.
No, we have to still do McDonald Heights.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Do we have to do that one again?
Yeah.
All right.
After all of that, yeah.
Okay, regarding, item three, the request for an additional half-story on the building, does anyone have any discussion on this? Go ahead, Christine.
No, I, I was just going to say, if it's not any higher than, than what's allowed, I, I don't think that it's a huge problem.
Okay, Art?
I agree, I mean, it's, it's, it's within the height limit.
It seems like, I mean, the indication was, it's the same number of apartments.
Right, there's no, right, there's no, as far as traffic and stuff, it's not going to make a difference, that extra few feet, and I guess, we were told that the fire company can handle a building that size.
Yeah, I can tell you, there are two tower ladders in Arlington.
Yeah, so I don't think we have a real, and they're fairly close, because.
Yes, they're right around.
Right here, in the corner.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Tony?
No, I have no, no further additions.
Okay, and Phyllis?
Well, no, but I would offer that visually, the other side of the road looks less imposing than this building did, when the gentleman compared the two buildings, the, the one with the four stories looks significantly more imposing. I will say that they kind of put them more within the development, so that they're probably not going to be that visible by the road, but I think they're imposing as, as a building looks. That's it.
Okay.
Paul, just one more thing. You know, they're showing that the building's going to be almost 400 feet from the neighbors, which will ease a little bit on the line of sight, but I thought I heard them also say that they might consider putting a different barrier between them and the other, maybe some kind of a fencing to help the neighbors.
Yeah, I want to, I want to ask Jeff about that. I know this is really more of a site plan issue, and I think we would still have opportunity to discuss it with, with the planning board in the future as part of the site plan. But Jeff, it sounded like you're at least willing to consider that notion of a fence of some kind between those properties in, in Darrow Place?
Yes, of course.
I don't see what that six-foot fence has to do with this, with this variance.
I don't think it would help with the, yeah, I don't think it would help with the, these buildings, but.
But in turn, the whole project, if that's something that planning wants to consider.
Something the planning board would look at.
I'm good with that.
All right, and there is a staff report, so Christine, do you mind doing this motion?
Not at all. One moment, okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair and in the staff report, so.
You can skip the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that with the skip, yes.
All right, any discussion, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then, that motion carries 5-0. And then, if there is no further business, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, then that motion carries, and we're adjourned till December.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.